Repeat session.
I want to get motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's... Certification first.
Let's see. Mr. Herman, I move to certify to the best of our knowledge only public business matter. Off the exempted from open mission requirement. And only such public business matters as were indicated in the motion go into executive session were heard, discussed, and considered executive session.
Okay. Mr. Secquid?
Yes.
Mr. Bostick?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Delegations on the agenda?
I'll turn the volume to the floor if you would like to speak.
If you will, let's bow our hearts toward the Father. Almighty God, we thank you, Father, for the opportunity to be out tonight and the freedom to do so. And we thank you for these board members and their dedication to the students of Russell County. And we thank you for those that are being recognized tonight and for their dedication as well. And we just ask that you continue to bless the schools of Russell County, keep the students safe, and just guide us as we go forward and be with the situation in the world. And let our leaders seek you first and foremost. And we thank you for everything in your great name, Yeshua meshiyah, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Anyone else want to speak to the board?
I would. This is a little racking for me, so excuse me. My name is Mark Burden. Okay, and I live here in Lebanon. Okay, and we sort of request like three minutes? Yep, I can do that. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about a motivational speaker named Mark Marrow. Mark was a WWF wrestler who has gone into schools for the past 10 years or more to give his story of dealing with addiction. He talks about respect for parents, just a message of positivity for our kids. He talks about choosing your friends wisely. My husband and I have a drug and alcohol ministry that we've done for about 15 years, and we've worked with many moms, dads, lots of families of those dealing with families in addiction. We always want to encourage recovery, but at this point, prevention is so much more important. Stop it before it happens. My husband and I and Rhonda and David Holt had a vision about two years ago to bring Mark Marrow into the Russell County schools before all this COVID stuff started. Within about three weeks, we have raised all the money to bring him here. So this is nothing that's going to cost anything to anybody. Samuel Pressure Vessel, HMG, the town of Lebanon, many churches and businesses donated money. The first attempt, we tried to bring him in was April 2020, and a week before he was supposed to come, COVID shut us down. In October last year, we were going to try, but we still were stuck in COVID. So about three weeks ago, David had come up to see Dr. Brown to see if we could do this this year, April 20th and 21st. And he said, you know, we were still under the Richmond rules and all that. But what we've been watching with all the basketball crowds and all this stuff piling into all of our gyms and everything else, we were wondering if there's any way that we could get the board to approve those dates to bring Mark in to speak to the kids. He'll go to Homemaker, Castlewood High, Lebanon. And the principal at Lebanon Middle School asked us if we would bring him there. Castlewood actually has said they're going to bring their middle schoolers over to the high school. We're also going to have a community night on the 21st, which is for anybody then in the community to come and hear him. So I'm here tonight to see if you have any questions or if we could get a vote to help us get a positive word in our kids. They've had a rough two years. And like I said, this isn't going to cost the county anything, isn't going to cost the schools anything. This is all taken care of and paid for.
Dr. Brown, I know we're not supposed to top, but so the principals are out for this?
Yes. Yes.
Well, I think if they are, I'd like that. I mean...
When he speaks, how long is his presentation?
I think it's usually about an hour, but then he leaves time so that if anybody, any kids want to... If you've ever... I can tell you, if you watch A Mother's Love...
I do. I do it. I'm a watch that, and then I get through that crowd.
No. No. He really touches kids' hearts. And I think with what they've been through in the last two years, let's give him something positive.
I agree.
I understand what you're all saying. I don't think that we really need to, how do I say this? Give you permission. I think it needs to go through the principals if they want to have you. I mean, and then they can work it into their schedule. That's the way it should be done.
Okay.
I don't think, I mean, they have everything all the time, and they're the ones that says that, not us.
Right, okay.
And I don't think that we even have a decision to make, one way or the other.
Okay.
Because I don't think it's up to us to tell them who they're going to be.
And but they're for it. I'm all for it.
Okay.
I don't think it's, you know, it's going to be a poor, I will...
I don't have a problem with it. I do. I just have a problem with this.
Just making sure it's good.
I just want to make sure that we're not forcing anything out of our...
Oh, right, 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 right.
I want to see him to shit here.
I do feel like...
Even it is, it will be...
I do feel like it will be, the timing is not as good as it could be because of the school year.
Yeah.
Because he's off end of the paper pretty good, like that Jim at the start of the school year, like, I don't know.
He could. We just have to go back and re...
You know, I'm talking about the start of the school year when the school year is new, you know? That's when that's so well stuff, you know? Because, you know, within a month, school's out. We're almost at graduation in May this year, so it might be more fresh in the kids' mind than that.
Okay.
But I did believe that... If this gets not available for next September, I'd say June came. Yeah, just principals all right with it.
All right. It would be a good, a good, a good way to start our new year with, you know, if it were September. I mean, Dr. Brown addressed us about this.
We may do it up down next year too.
And...
Do it like daily.
Yeah, we've been doing this twice now. It may be a new variant for them, who knows? But anyway, it's the what works best for you. Well, I know that when I talked with the principals the last time, they said they knew the SOLs were in May. And I said, well, that's why we wanted to do it before that, because we know that once, then it gets to a crunch for them. They start doing prepping. Right. You know, heavy prepping. I'm sure the teachers this year will be, so... So we'll check them down and see what's happening. All right, thank you. So thank you, Ms. Burden.
Thanks for bringing it.
Yes.
You're welcome. Do we have anyone else? Okay, Dr. Brown, do we have an adjustment for the agenda tonight?
Yes, Madam Chair, I gave an adjustment to Madam Clerk. The item number 500, action items in the superintendent's search.
Okay, thank you. Do we get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
To move.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We won't do that right yet. Okay, Dr. Brown. Approval of the minutes? Have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Regular monthly meeting, February 2nd meeting. And we have a vote for that. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes for the special call meeting. We have a motion that we approve those.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parsons. We have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor of approving the special call meeting? Yes. Aye. Dr. Brown, are recognitions for this season?
Yes, Madam Chair, I ask Assistant Superintendent Fletcher to join us.
Dr. Brown, Madam Chair, mention of board. We have our employees of the month recognized tonight. It's a pleasure to present them to you. The support employee of the month is Lake and Keane for Lebanon Elementary School. And there's illness in the family. She's not able to come, so we'll bring her back next month. For the teacher of the month, I'd like to ask Ms. Dominique Slaw at Castlewood High. Would you bring your family with you, Mr. Clark?
Take care, Ramon. Take care.
Do you want to join us? All right, I'd like to read to you the nomination for Ms. Slaw. Castlewood High School was blessed with many teachers who genuinely love their students and seek not only to enrich those young lives and minds, but also adequately prepare them for life beyond high school. One teacher, however, stands out with her ability to inspire and her heart of compassion. That teacher, Ms. Dominique Travis Slaw, should be the Russell County Schools' Employee of the Month. Mrs. D, as she is affectionately called, teaches upper level English, governor's school, and dual enrollment classes. Consistently, Castlewood High School graduates speak of the way her classes prepared them for the world beyond high school. Interesting, interesting, interestingly, sorry. That praise comes from college students, soldiers, and members of the workforce. Mrs. D is able to reach and support kids on any path they choose. Each year, she designates one week in which she invites graduates to return to school to offer insights and advice to her current students. The alumni unwaveringly listen to these classes among those high school courses that adequately prepare them for their futures. Spring 2020 brought a sense of uncertainty as we all, both teachers and students alike, began to navigate the world of distance learning. Mrs. D's students flourished, adjusting to this change as... Adjusting to change is another life skill that was served him well. She committed to offering meaningful assignments and encouragement, and her students are still responding accordingly. In 2020, once schools were closed by the governor, her DE classes breathed a short-lived sigh of relief that their very demanding debate week could possibly be canceled. The assignment became such a, had become such a tradition in the school that each year, teachers and students from other classes look forward to being members of the audience as two seniors present detailed and documented research on opposing viewpoints on timely subjects. That year, Ms. D kept the almost famous week going strong. The debates occurred right on schedule through the magic of Zoom. Though challenging, especially under our current circumstances, this activity will be one that students will never forget. Zoom has always been the tool, Ms... Zoom has also been the tool Mrs. D used to offer students comfort and smiles on virtual days. She often schedules Zoom meetings to read a bedtime story to her seniors. That's right, a bedtime story, complete with voices and sound effects, to seniors. They tune in and love it. Mrs. D's list of accomplishments cannot be contained or described in a single document. She traditionally arranges a trip to the National Guard Armory as her seniors read a book set in wartime. She writes countless letters of recommendation for her students as they seek college admission, scholarships, or work. She keeps a case of ramen noodles in her classroom for students who may need something to eat in the week evenings or weekends. She started coaching a nearly nonexistent track team and increased its numbers to 40-plus members, one of the largest teams in the school, and has led them to state every single year. She works tirelessly as a senior sponsor, fundraising so the seniors are able to enjoy unforgettable activities and trips. She sponsors the SCA and guides the club to meet student and family needs. Two of her poetry books are often checked out from the school library. She is the reigning faculty spirit queen, a title bestowed on the faculty member who displays the most school spirit during homecoming. Perhaps if she is named Employee of the Month, as she deserves, she could place this certificate alongside her blue plastic Spirit Queen crown. Congratulations.
I'll have to play us around the longest one we've ever had.
Okay, do we have a motion that we pay the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Secquid. All in favor? Aye. Dr. Brown, the resignations and retirements?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a list for the board's consideration tonight.
Okay, do we have a motion that we approve the resignations and retirements? Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Brown, the youth personnel and transfers?
Yes, Madam Chair, again, list tonight of about 18.
Okay. Need a motion that we approve the transfers and new buyers?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Dr. Brown, our graduation date?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have five action items for board's consideration tonight after the adjustment. The first one deals with the approval of the graduation date for the class of 22. Of course, again, as we've heard previously, it was a very trying year, and I guess the last two years have been very trying. Hopefully, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. In regards to our graduation, we have been given early on in the year the opportunity to have remote instruction days. Flew up in from weather days. So with that being said, Madam Chair, we've been able to secure 15 of those days. We've used nine so far for inclement weather. And with that being shared, in our current situation, I believe it's safe for us to move forward with setting the graduation date. My recommendation, Madam Chair, a little early, but again, due to the flexibility given to us by the DOE and the General Assembly, I would recommend May 22nd as our graduation date for the classes of 2022.
Very good. And our April meeting will be setting the last day of school, so we should have a better feel for that, should we?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Do I have a motion that we approve May 22nd?
Are they planning on having outside this year also?
That'd be the flexibility of the administration. With the way things are going, I'm sure that with the coronavirus update, we're hoping that we can get back to a pre-COVID world here in the very near future. So I believe at this point, probably things are trending, Mr. Ball will be able to give them the choice of whatever method they would like. The outside was great, I thought, last year. But again, we are having air conditioning put in all three high school gyms.
That was nice.
And by the guidance of the school board. And with that being said, part of the condition of that contract was the completion by May 15th. So the principals will have the flexibility to, you know, maybe set up both areas. Again, wanting to get, we got a problem with the outside, we'll be the right.
And our commissioner's nice.
Have a motion that we approve graduation date?
I move the motion, Madam Chair, to approve that date for May 22nd.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Dr. Brown, approval of our special ed plan?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have three in a row here. We'll do them individually, but it is the approval of annual plans. Ms. Farmer's required to submit for board approval an education plan, and that goes on to the DOE after the board's approval, again, annually. This is the plan for the 2223 school year. And again, the value of this plan for Russell County focus schools, Madam Chair, is roughly $1 million.
Thank you. Do I have a motion that we approve our special ed annual plan?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor? Aye. I'd like to thank Ms. Farmer for all the work that she does with the special ed program and also the, the after-school Center 21 program. There's quite a bit of funding that helps there, or students in there.
A lot of extra work she does, yeah.
The, that leads us to the next one, Madam Chair. As a matter of fact, that's the approval of the 21st century grant applications. Again, annually, school divisions will submit grants for 21st century programming in the school division. We have four grants this year that are going to be submitted, and the value here is $800,000.
Do we need a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor? Aye. Okay, Dr. Brown?
Item number four, Madam Chair, is the approval of the 2223 CTE Perkins Plan. Again, this is money dedicated to our vocational programs. This is something that falls under Mr. Fletcher's supervision and preparation. And annually, this is worth nearly $100,000.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor? Aye. I'd also like to thank Mr. Fletcher for all the work that he does with that vocational project. We visited the agriculture out of Lebanon High School last month or so. And that's a really good program and enthusiastic teacher out there, so...
Yes, Madam Chair, and again, we appreciate the board's dedication to those programs with the board's guidance, we were able to construct something that didn't exist really, and that is a facility for the ag program. We have two teachers now and 150 students, basically, that are interested in the program. So one out of every four students, basically, is involved in that program. So we're very proud of that and expect that to continue to grow.
Got some nice equipment in there, so...
Yeah, nice deal.
Item number five, Madam Chair, is an item that was added that dealt with the superintendent's search. So I'll turn that over to Madam Chair and the board members.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Brown.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for legal counsel, but entering the negotiation for Dr. Kim Hooker to be our next superintendent of the rest of County Focus Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'd like to say that much. Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor? Aye.
I have a question.
Sure.
We have a vote on the superintendent's unit.
That's what we're getting ready to do.
That's included in the motion. The motion covers both topics.
Yeah, we're getting ready to vote on that.
Okay. No discussion?
What, do you want to have a discussion? Go ahead.
Well, that's just one, that's just one nominee, okay? I'm on my nominee somewhere else, so go ahead.
Okay.
You can't vote on it because the nominee's what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Well, I have a motion in the second for Dr. Hooker, so I'll take a roll call vote at this point in time for her, and then if you have...
Well, you don't do the nominees, are you?
Well, if you got one, go ahead.
I mean, you were asking, you're taking a vote before you even get all your nominees.
Well, go ahead with your nominee.
I nominate Kim Karen Hooker.
Okay. Anybody second that?
Are you the chairman?
No, ma'am. No, sir.
I need a, do I have a second? We'll take a vote for Dr. Hooker. Mr. Se...
Yes.
Mr. Bostick?
No.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yeah.
And myself, yes.
So we'd like for you to enter into negotiations, please.
And congratulations to Dr. Hooker.
I would like to say we've had good applicants. They interviewed well. I would like to congratulate Dr. Kim Hooker. She has dedicated 34 years to Russell County schools. She's worked in many different areas in our schools, and I think that would be, that's a positive as far as I'm concerned. She's put her time in here at Russell County, and that I part, I appreciate. And the other, the other applicants were good educators, and I'm sure they would be an asset to Russell County as well, so at some point in time, perhaps. And congratulations to Dr. Tim Hooker.
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Brown, do you have the reopening plan?
Yes, Madam Chair, and hopefully, at some point in time, we'll be able to drop this item. But again, things continue to, to trend in the, the right direction. Positivity rate, as we've cut in half over the last week, the number of admissions is lower than the number of discharges into our valid health network. So we're definitely having, you know, things looking up for us. We have had conversations with the Health Department as recent as yesterday. And with those conversations, again, those comments from the leadership with the Health Department are that things are trending in the right direction. So we're hoping to continue to make adjustments and head back toward pre-COVID, pre-pandemic levels. But again, we need to do this cautiously and, you know, with a rational approach to doing so. So we'll be communicating with our friends and colleagues, working with legal counsel to be sure that we're making the best moves for Russell County as we move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Our sales tax in ADM, sales tax was 555,989.58. ADM, 3262. The board have any question on the maintenance report or the expenditure report? Future agenda items?
Madam Chair, we do have future agenda items. We've received a press set of policies and so forth that we'll be going through and evaluating and having those before the board in April for a first reading. So that'll be our goal in regards to that. And again, hopefully, continue to have some positive information for the board in regards to our recovery from the pandemic.
Okay, our next meeting will be April the 7th, 2022. The insurance committee will be meeting, Dr. Brown, March the 15th, is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, that'll be our first meeting. We normally have at least two. With this, we'll review the current activity for Russell County focus schools in regards to our insurance for the year-to-date. And then, of course, the committee members can share recommendations to our insurance group as far as what they'd like to see moving forward. In addition to that, again, at the end of April, the board does have their... In addition to that, again, at the end of April, the board does have their BSBA Annual Convention. At this point in time, it's going to be virtual. We'll see if that changes. If that is, on the 28th, again, at 6 o'clock.
I'd like to thank Mr. Bostick and Mr. Ball for their help with the insurance meeting and hope that's successful for our employees. That's about as important as your salary anymore, is watching insurance. Okay, I'd like to thank Mr. Street for his presence tonight. I missed you, and thank you for your kind. And all the other tickets that we have, his music, good to see. Both his music. We got two.
Madam Chair, I made, this is the future calendar agenda items. I've just, I've recently read an article that Virginia Baptist Commission has created the Talent Attraction Program, student loan payment. That is, it's by dedicating, if a teacher, I mean, if a new teacher dedicates two years to teach in Southwest Virginia counties, they can receive up to $24,000 in longer payment. If they apply for additional two years, they can receive an additional $24,000 on a $48,000 for a four-year period. Although this article says that this program is directed at recent graduates, trying to attract them to come to Southwest Virginia, I propose a re brought a letter to the Baptist Commission, asking them to consider paying in our teachers' loan debt to retain them, to stay in, to keep our dead teachers in Southwest Virginia, as soon as our teachers have stayed here instead of leaving. I would propose that, you know, just instead of trying to get their work opportunity down here, let's try to keep Southwest Virginia here.
Got to be done? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything? Mr. Ball, anybody? Okay, Mr. Bostick, you want to, do I have a motion for a chairman?
No, no.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.